Good evening, everyone. We will call the Monday, February 2, 2015 City Council meeting to order. First order of business is the roll call. Charlene.
Scott. Drew. Lewis. Doyle. Wright. Estes. Nordstrom. Roberts. Weifenbach. Laurenti. We have Korm.
Thank you. We now welcome Dr. Richard Wells from John Witherspoon College for the invocation. You're welcome to participate, but not required.
And Heavenly Father, thank you so very much for the great privilege that we have in this free country, still to acknowledge that you are God and that we are in need of your power and your wisdom and your grace. We thank you, Father, for this good place which we are, where we are privileged to live, to call home. We thank you for the people who make up this city and region. We thank you for our mayor, for our city council, for those who protect us and those who lead our city in so many ways, big and small. We thank you, Father, for the favor that you have shown to this part of the world. And now, Father, we pray, as you have instructed us to pray, for those in authority who make decisions. We pray for Mayor Quaker and for the council tonight. We pray for wisdom as matters are deliberated and decided. And we pray, oh God, for grace to speak truth in love and respect. And we pray that, that our speech tonight will be seasoned as it were with salt, so that harmony, even when there is disagreement, will prevail. So, Father, again, we thank you for the good gift of being here and living in this place and this country. And we pray for, that you will establish the work of our hands in this meeting tonight for your great glory and for our good. We pray in the name of your son. Amen.
Thank you, Dr. Wells. We're now on to the adoption of the agenda. We do have one change for sure, and that's an amendment to items 10 and 11. We'll put our city council president, Jerry Wright, on this.
Yes, Mayor, on Public Works Consent, item number 10, that item is to be pulled and deleted. Item 11 is to be rewritten as PW 0127-15-08. Authorized staff to advertise for bids for two 74-horsepower skid steer loader with 74-inch low-profile bucket. Estimated cost for both items of $80,800. I make a motion for approval of that amendment?
Of you. Are there any other amendments? We'll just handle it all at once. Any other changes to tonight's agenda? Charlene, did you catch the change? No, I'm saying, did you understand the amendment that's being made? Okay, all right. So, bottom line is we're striking 10 from the agenda. We'll be adopting the agenda without item number 10. Item number 11 has been amended per Alderman Wright's comments. Yeah, we'll probably pull 11 when we get to that to clarify. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda? We have a motion by Laurenti and a second by Nordstrom to approve the agenda without item number 10 and to amend 11 as stated. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. We now have awards and recognitions, and if Lieutenant Tim Weaver from the fire department, along with Assistant Chief Rod Seals, would meet me down front.
Lieutenant Tim Weaver with our fire department has been very busy since at least 2011, working on fire mitigation and survivable space initiative on behalf of the fire department and the entire city. And he has received an award, which is very exciting for him and for our community. And now to present that award and a little bit more information about it is Assistant Chief Rod Seals.
Thank you, Mayor. A little bit about this award, it's worth noting, so I'll read something that I got off the, the website dealing with this award. This is the first annual wildfire mitigation award. It was established in 2014 in response to an overwhelming number of great wildfire mitigation program efforts across the nation. The wildfire mitigation awards are the highest national honor one can receive for outstanding work and significant program impact in wildfire preparedness and mitigation. The wildfire mitigation awards are jointly sponsored by the National Associations of State Foresters, the International Association of Fire Chiefs, the National Fire Protection Association, and the United States Forest Service. There are three categories for these awards. They include a fire-adapted communities, wildfire mitigation innovation, and community wildfire preparedness pioneer. These awards are designed to recognize outstanding service in wildfire preparedness and safety across a broad spectrum of activities and among a variety of individuals and organizations. By honoring their achievements, the award sponsors also seek to increase public recognition and awareness of the value of wildfire mitigation efforts. The 2015 awards will be presented at the Reno, Nevada Wildland Urban Interface Conference on March 25, 2015. The award that we're recognizing tonight is being presented under the category wildfire mitigation innovation awards. Travis Lipp with the Bureau of Land Management, Jerry Durr with Mead County, and Lieutenant Tim Weaver with Rapid City Fire Department are being recognized and recipients of this award. And I'll turn it over to Tim to discuss a little bit more about it.
Thanks, Chief. The BLM is basically recognizing Rapid City for our efforts with our Veterans Initiative Program. And this program provides good-paying jobs to veterans in our community. And we give them a chance to help them out while they're transitioning into more permanent employment, going to school, or what have you. And in turn, we get wildfire mitigation out of them to make our city safer. When the BLM, with Mike Denenberg from the regional office in BLM, approached Rapid City Fire Department and kind of came up with this plan, we never thought it would really be this successful, and so we're pretty proud of that. It sure is a team effort in Rapid City. We certainly can't do it without the help from other participants in Rapid City, especially the Parks Department. We needed a place to house these guys and work these guys out of. The Parks Department's been a great help to us. Jeff and Lon and Gary Garner's been working closely with me throughout this whole process. And the maintenance staff over there has been maintaining all the equipment that they use. And then also the commitment to the city itself to purchasing new equipment to help us do this work is also a big asset. So, it's a great program. It does a lot of good in our community, and we're pretty proud of it. Thanks.
One last, couple last people I'd like to recognize for this is also Amy Graves, because I know that she manages all the paperwork and the grant administration for this. And then also the mayor and the city council for your leadership, not only allowing us to put in for grants such as this, but to really allow us to think out of the box and, and, you know, do the good things with the BLM and the joint venture with all of this. So, with that.
Thank you very much.
I gotta do a plug for the pine beetle. This all started about four years ago, almost, when we were facing an epidemic of pine beetles in the Black Hills. Rapid City was one of them. And we started with the pine beetle program. After meeting with the Forest Service, we initiated it at our level, at the city. It was a pioneering effort with Parks Department. Fire Department approached us. We combined it with wildland fires. We've combined an effort that's mitigated the, not only the pine beetle, but also wildland fire. Tremendous example of interdepartmental cooperation and effort that's going to gain us ground. And actually, I believe, other communities have kind of copied us, haven't they? So, we can be proud of Rapid City.
Let's give Lieutenant Weaver and his team applause.
Well, I'm a part of it.
Congratulations again, Lieutenant Weaver and our fire department. Now on to general public comment. I have one general public comment item, and that's from Marv Cammer. Topic is hockey incident. Marv, good evening, and you have the floor, sir.
Good evening to all of you. I come here not as a resident of Rapid City, but a resident of this community in South Dakota. I come here because I am angry. I am disturbed of how young people, children, travel from a long way, and I know some of these people, to come to an event that Rapid City has, an entertainment event called hockey. I understand it's good entertainment. Some of them really enjoy it, and I'm glad they do. We all have an investment in Rapid City and the Pacific Center. But when I see incidents like this that happen, it hurts. These kids, these little kids will never forget what happened the other night. And I see here, in this paper, my paper, did native students stand for national anthem? What in the hell is that all about? I'm sure they did. They're exemplary students. But even if they hadn't, we have the right to demonstrate in this country and the right of free speech and the right of expression. We don't want to ever lose that. I come from a culture that's tied to the land, with all its beauty and all its harshness. And so does my native brothers and sisters. They once owned this land. Through no fault of their own, they were displaced. But since when do we become so ignorant, stupid, and arrogant that we will insult and harm the feelings of children? I was here all day long some years back when we had a national hearing on racism. I sat there all day long and listened to these people and the pain they felt in giving the examples of what they considered to be offensive policy. And I will never forget the voice of one woman whose brother has been chairman of the board of Standing Rock. I will never forget her testimony and that she said, "I would like to be able to go through one day of my life without being reminded of the fact that I am Indian." We can be better than that. I think all of you, when you see this headline, ought to be jumping on the journal and the headquarters in Iowa. You ought to be pounding the desk. Enough is enough. Our people, my people, come here all this week. Thousands of, spending money here. Lot of them don't know a thing about this or care, but I care. In 1980, we had 12,000 people over a period of 10 days at our ranch. People of every color, dimension, who spoke languages, that were from 35 different countries and 24 Indian nations.
We really appreciate you coming tonight. If you could please wrap up your comments.
I would ask that those people who are responsible be banned. Any going through that door for any event. I'm sure the person who runs that event doesn't and didn't want that to happen, but he better pick his friends a little better. And the native people that come here for powwows and basketball games, if they come all nothing but $2 bills in their pockets, we'd recognize how valuable those communities are to Rapid City. I'm sorry I come here and angry, but I am angry and I am disgusted with my community and with some of my associates. But some of them are pretty well respecting their communities. They need to pay a price for their ignorance and the blatant racism.
Thank you, Marv.
Thank you for your testimony or your time.
We do not have any further general public comment items. Have I missed anyone? Have I missed anyone? General public comment is now closed. We are now on public comments for items 2 through 57. Items 2 through 57, and again, I have no speaker request forms for items 2 through 57. Have I missed anyone? Seeing none, public comment on 2 through 57 is now closed. We'll now go to council members or staff for any of these items 2 through 57 to be polled for individual consideration. We'll first go to Alderman Jerry Wright. Item 11. Charity Doyle.
Item number 27, please.
I'm sorry, Jerry, I cut you off.
11 and 29.
11 and 29. Charity?
27.
27. So you have 11, 27, 29. Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 37.
We have 11, 27, 29, and 37. Do we have a motion to approve the ballots? We have a motion by Lewis and a second by Nordstrom to approve items 2 through 57 with the exceptions of 11, 27, 29, and 37. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. We will go to item number 11. Why don't we just go to Alderman Wright to help us with the motion on that, Jerry?
Thank you, Mayor. Item 11, which is PW 0127-15-08, will be amended to reflect authorized staff to advertise for bids for two 74-horsepower skid steer loaders with 74-inch low-profile bucket. Estimated cost for both units of $80,800. I make a motion to approve.
By Roberts. Any discussion on item 11? Everyone understands it? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. And just, as a reminder, item 10 was removed from the agenda at the time of adoption. It was not approved. We are now on item number 27, and we'll go to Charity Doyle, if you could read this for us.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 27 is to authorize staff to seek proposals for engineering services for detailed studies of the Federal Emergency Management Agency designated special flood hazard areas. Estimated project costs $210,000. I make a motion to approve, and I'd like to maintain the floor.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second by Wright, and you have the floor.
Thank you. Now, before I was going to make these comments, I was expecting Mr. Dale Teck or Mr. Woltersdorf to be here. So I understand, Mr. Van Cleve, if you're not equipped to answer the question. But you were at Public Works, and one of the questions I asked then was to, just for the purposes of reemphasizing that the intent of these studies, it does cover, or the intent, rather, is to get, see what, see what we can do to get these people that FEMA put in the floodplain a year ago out and try to get them out of the floodplain. Can you elaborate on that, or you want to just nod if I paraphrase? If I may, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Well, I don't know how much I can elaborate, but that is the intent, to re-study FEMA, to be able to, or the floodplain, to see if we can't get people out of the floodplain so that they're not paying the high insurance rates that go along with being inside of the floodplain. I, I don't know the numbers of people impacted at this point, but that, that is the intent of those projects.
And do you know, Mr. Van Cleve, if the underground spring-related drainage issues were going to be part of this study?
That I do not know.
I can follow up with Public Works Director to get that. But again, this is, this is part of, it is being funded through the Drainage Utility. And the intent is to utilize those funds to get, do whatever we can do to get some of these people out of that, that floodplain. And we just wanted to make sure that that got on the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Jerry Wright.
I'm sure Dave can't answer this question, but I assume, by the wording of this, and maybe Charity or other members of Public Works Committee can help me, that they're going to back with this money and actually reevaluate the FEMA evaluations and see if they're calculate? Or are we going to actually go in there and redesign or potentially design those drainage areas? For drainage utility work to get them out of the floodway? For what? For both? Or do we know? All of the above? Okay.
If I may, Mayor.
Can clarify, thank you.
Mr. Teck did give a more detailed explanation at Public Works meeting, concise, but if you'd like to go pull the video on it, he, he talked about the areas that it was going to cover and what the, what the intent was. Because we have been asking them, for all the people that were affected by what FEMA did and by them expanding and reevaluating their, their maps, it took some people out of the floodplain, which was good news, but it put a lot of them in as well. And with, you know, home, our flood insurance, everything, these people are stuck with the bill on that. We want to do whatever we can to try to see what improvements we can make to get them out. So we'd be handling the, the management of getting that done, rather than telling an individual homeowner, you need to go take care of this and work with FEMA.
Thank you. I guess I'm, I'm a little concerned, and having been gone last week, and I apologize, I'm not up to speed on this as well as I'd like to be. I don't want this money to go to a study, to a study, a study, so to speak. If that's what we're planning, I'm a little concerned. I would also like to see an effort, the same effort, going towards redesigning some of these drainage areas. I'm sure we're talking about down Nebraska Centennial, in the area that we're concerned about, of redesigning those areas and actually developing and constructing drainage ways and getting the people out of the floodway. I agree with, totally agree with what Alderman Doyle is after, supported 1,000 percent. But I'm not sure I have the answers. I'm totally comfortable with the direction we're going here.
May I elaborate one more?
Sure.
Point. In a a different meeting, I had challenged the Public Works Director to go and look at the library of studies that the city has already conducted and we've paid for and looked at, and I, I know that we've had this discussion as well. He did do that, and these studies are over and above what we've already done and are necessary to look at the dynamics of these floodplain areas now, so that we can start to mitigate these issues.
We'll now go to Alderman Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was at Public Works last week, and I did ask a question of, of City Engineer Dale Teck. And this is what I think he told me. And I've been wrong more times this week than I care to admit, so what I understand this helps us do is study the situation and, and help us prioritize where we can best spend our money first to have the greatest impact on the most amount of people. So it'll help prioritize the projects, as I understand it. Now, one of the things that I understood when, core back when we were even discussing the stormwater is that, is that when you look at a project... is that when you look at a project and before you, you know, I don't know at what design phase or at what stage in the design you have to be, but you can send that project to FEMA before you actually put it out to bids and build it and to get a commitment out of them that if you do that project and follow through whether or not it'll have a positive impact on taking people out of the floodplain. So that probably didn't clear anything up for anybody, but that's what I think I asked and that's what I think I heard at Public Works. Thanks.
Thank you. Alderman Darla Drew.
Thank you, Mayor. Quite a few people in my area have contacted me concerning this in the low-lying areas of South Canyon. So I'm wondering, are the areas to be studied already designated? Or can you ask to be part of this study? What, how does that? They're already, so if someone contacts me, I can't just say, oh yeah, just go ahead and go talk to those guys. They'll have a look at it? Okay. Because they're going to talk to me. Thank you.
If that happens though, you should talk to Terry and Dale to see if there's something that can be done. If somebody comes on a related issue that's not on the map that was shown last week. Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I deem it pertinent to just remind myself that I sat on this dais when there was a neighboring town that did these studies, remove people from the floodplain. And it wasn't even three months after that they got removed from the floodplain and dropped their flood insurance, that they got whacked. And in the front page of the Journal, their house was floating down the river. So sometimes you've got to be careful what you wish for. But my question is, what's the funding source? Is it CIP?
The funding source is the Stormwater Utility. Is that correct? Dave? Dave Van Cleve is confirmed.
That's the Drainage Utility or?
Yes.
Okay. And then this is a study on the studies that have already been done by FEMA?
One of the areas is, I'm sorry.
I think that's kind of the way. Okay, I'm going to have to get myself up to speed a little bit far. If the improvements are identified, will that be the same funding source? Will be the drainage fee? Drainage tax?
We'll go to Dave Van Cleve.
Yes. That is my understanding. That's where we come from.
This a bid project or is it a dog and pony show?
This is a consultant project. So we would hire a consultant to be able to do this work.
And how do they, I mean, how are they going to pick those people?
I believe it would be according to our ordinary consulting selection process.
All right, thank you.
We'll now go to Alderman Jerry Wright.
Something tells me to delay this for two weeks. And I'll tell you why. I would really like to know because I'm an absolute supporter of the Stormwater Drainage Utility. I absolutely want to see the properties that are impacted by the FEMA take care of to the best that we can. But I'm going to go out on a limb and say, I looked at some of these areas and I'm convinced that we can do some engineering and projects and get them out of there without studying it to death. We need to study it, there's no question about it. But I think that if the wording and intent is to take FEMA on and re-engineer their analysis, I think it's probably a waste of time. But I'm not, I'm just not sure exactly the direction that Terry and Dale are going. Sorry, I'm just, that's where I'm at. I want to do this, but it's. Well, I'll tell you what. If it turns out to be a study of a study of a study, it doesn't get a stake in the ground and any dirt moved, I'm going to be one mad councilman. So, I mean, if the council wants to proceed, I don't care. I'm for progress and I'm all for getting this issue straightened up downtown or down south and other places. I'm sorry I wasn't here. And I'm sorry that our chief, your key personnel, are not here to answer the questions either. So we're kind of up against the wall. Will two weeks kill the deal?
I don't think so. One of the next council members might make a motion.
I'll let them speak, thank you.
Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question for Public Works again is, do we have any expectations that we will be able to remove anybody from the floodplain? One of the reasons is the FEMA went through. Obviously, if you follow any of the, what FEMA's doing with the flood insurance is they didn't have enough funding available. So they went through and, you know, redid their map, which they do anyway, but they increased the coverage. So they actually, they had a marketing campaign and everything to get people to buy their premiums. It's just an insurance policy is what it is. And so, I mean, if we're going to put a study together and have no real expectations of even really doing anybody any good, I guess that would be my question. Is there a realistic expectation barring all the politics and a lot of some of the reasoning behind some of the flood insurance changes?
Dave?
Well, as I said, I'm not that familiar with it, but I do know that was the intent, to try to get people out of the floodplain. And I could tell you that there were basically three areas that they were really looking at. One was South Canyon Drainage, South Robbinsdale Drainage, and then the Haynes Avenue Drainage. Those three areas I think we're focused on specifically.
Mr. Mayor, I have another question. And so, these could have been areas that we had identified previously that needed help with drainage? Is that correct?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And unfortunately, I wish Terry was here tonight, Dave, no offense. But it was my understanding at Public Works that this study was going to be to look at ways to mitigate some of these people that are in the floodplain. Is that correct, Dave?
That was my understanding.
And I don't know, and maybe Jerry knows, if we have done a good study to find out how we can mitigate these areas to get some of these people out of this flood area? Or Charity?
Direct your question to who you'd like to.
And that's my understanding. That's what this is. That's what this study is for, is to mitigate. It's not to study it again about where the drainage is. We all know where the drainage areas are. We are just looking for ways to mitigate and get people out of the floodplain.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Charity, did you, he directed a question to you. Would you like to answer that further or are you okay? Is that both of you? We'll go to Jerry Wright.
If the word mitigates in there, okay, kind of. But like I said, I'm with John, everybody else. We're after solutions and put an old engineer hat back on. When we first received the FEMA floodplain, it was shocking to some community members that were stuck with it and found out their property were going to be taxed because of the new ordinance or the new findings of FEMA. And I took the opportunity of doing some mapping on our GIS system with our staff, laying out the, in particular, the area, I believe, in Centennial, Nebraska. And when you laid out the floodplain and you lay it within the channels that we have improved, it appeared to fit. The issue is the lot lines of the property where the houses are include, intrude into that area. So I'm convinced it was some, it would require some channel improvements and also probably some acquisition of property or gifting of property back to the city into the drainage area and to get them out of the floodway. I just want to make sure that's the kind of effort we're going to see with this money. I don't want to go back and recalculate the flows that FEMA used. And one of the little historical fact on FEMA, as I understand it, was they were hit really hard the last five to 10 years with disaster money. And they were told, raise your rates to include finding ways to getting money. And I think they just moved further up the channel. And that's part of what happened to us. We got stuck. But I want to make sure this money goes to solve problems and get people out of paying insurance if we can. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion on item 27? Everyone understands the motion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We are now on item number 29. Charity?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 29 is to acknowledge the 2014 Stormwater Utility Review Report. I would make that motion. Are we getting the report?
We will in just a moment. Do we have a second for the acknowledgement? Second by Drew. So you have the floor.
I'm Dave Van Cleve, the Water Reclamation Superintendent, and I was asked to come and give a brief presentation on the activities of the Stormwater Utility Group this past year, the inaugural year of our utility. First of all, just some financial information. Currently, our fund balance as of the end of 2014 stood at $1 million and our 2015 revenue projection was $2.3 million. Our 2015 total budget, $2.3 million, with a million of that being towards operations and $1.3 million looking at CIP for replacement and improvements and expansions of the drainage systems. For the 2014 figures, our operational budget was $7.5 million. Our expenditures were $523,000, with the bulk of that being in personnel and CIP equipment. Just to note that, of course, we didn't have all the personnel hired until midway through last year. So that's, will be reflected in next year's costs. Our staff, we're totally staffed now. At the end of June, we have seven and a half FTEs, engineering, crew chief, and operators are the primary position that we have right now. Quickly to talk about some of the capital equipment that we purchased. We purchased some specialized equipment to be able to enter some of these confined drainage areas and that's made the work go much quicker and more smoothly. One of the first things we bought was a mini excavator. This unit allows us to remove large woody debris and to get in and grade drainage ditches. Purchased a compact track loader. This unit with rubber tracks, again, allows us to get into backyards and those kind of areas without damaging the yards. It was also equipped with a brush cutter. That unit was designed to be able to cut down three-inch trees and mow them over. We also purchased a forestry cutter. This unit can take eight-inch trees and grind them, standing trees, and grind them down to chips. And we also purchased a wood chipper because there's a lot of woody debris in these areas. And so this reduces the number of trips to the landfill to be able to dispose of that material. The largest item we purchased, this is about a $300,000 purchase, was a jet vacuum truck, which will enable the stormwater crews to jet clean the storm pipes. And that equipment is slated to be delivered on the 12th of February. Quickly, just some operational statistics. When we look at the past year in terms of the drainage ditch and channel cleaned, about a little over 500,000 square feet. That equates to about 10 miles of a 10-foot wide ditch. We also looked at nine miles of storm sewer jetting. We had about six miles of storm sewer televising and then catch basin cleaned, et cetera. Quickly, just to go through some of the projects that we worked on this year, this happens to be one of the drainage areas that we looked at and obviously it was a little bit daunting. And so we are very grateful for the equipment that was supplied to try to get through these areas. This was East Chicago Street. Before and after pictures, you can see the outlet culverts. You could not even see them in the jungle. And that was the after picture of when we got through cleaning that area. And just another picture of that same drainage. This is an example of a construction-type incident where gravel, dirt runs off, actually filled up a stormwater catch basin completely full. It took about eight hours for the crews to be able to clean this out and clean the pipe that went across the road. About $1,200 to clean that one particular catch basin. This is what the interior should look like when they're clean. This is a case over on Mead Channel where we had overflowing channels at times. And so the crews went in and they put in some prefab concrete to raise the elevation of the channel and help channelize that flow. This one at Middle Valley is just an example of retention ponds. We've got a number of retention ponds that are filling with woody growth. And so we got in there and we cut down trees and tried to clear those out. This was up on North Plaza Drive. In this particular case, some of the storm sewer piping had broken, had gaps in it and leads to erosion of the soil falling down into the pipes, creating hazardous areas. And so this is the case where the crews then go in and they'll make repairs to the pipe and patch it. And then when they're all done, come back and reseed the area. Just another case, Cameron Street Inlet. We have a lot of inlets around town that slowly fill in with sediment and the crews go back in, open up these ends of these culverts. This was a pretty big project. This was up at Whitewood Street. This is a couple blocks north of the guard camp. In the before picture, as I mentioned before, one of our crew members is actually standing in that middle of that picture waving and it's like being in a jungle. And the second picture is after we finished cleaning that area up, the same place. Down on the levees on Rapid Creek, behind the water plant, this was Sioux Park Levy Outlets. We went in there with our jet vacuum truck. We vacuum out the debris that's in there. As you can tell, those pipes were quite clogged. And so being able to open those up is going to improve the hydraulics of the system. Just to look at the interior of the pipes, and this is what we use those jet vacuum trucks for is to go through. There was about a foot of sediment in the bottom of those pipes. One of the biggest problems that we have with a lot of these drainage areas are willows because it's wet. This happened to be at Willow Park, just north of here, up by the scout shop and about two blocks. And the crews were able to get through that particular project in about a day and a half. And basically, because of the equipment that we have, it allows them to get through there and take that out pretty quickly. Just another picture of the energy dissipation outlets and what the crews did with that and trying to clean those out. Dover Ditch, another example of willows over on the west side of town. Again, the crews go in there, they clean out that woody debris and open up the channel. This is out in Churchill Street, a younger area in terms of the growth. This is over where the old landfill was, over in the Robbinsdale area. And you can see where the willows are growing up in there. So we got in there, we clear them out and trying to improve the flow characteristics. And then lastly, this is just a list of the proposed projects in 2015. Got about $300,000 there for miscellaneous repair and improvements. There are $210,000, as was just discussed, in floodplain studies and then some other miscellaneous projects. But we just wanted to thank the council for, you know, starting this utility right and enabling us to get the right equipment so that we could get in here and make some quick work out of some of these areas. In 2015, we should be able to improve on the productivity now that we've got crews that are somewhat experienced. We're getting used to the equipment and we'll have a full year to work on it. With that, if there are any other questions, I'd be more than willing to try to answer them.
Thank you, Dave. Please stand by for a moment. We do have one. Alderman Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, if I may make the motion to acknowledge the report.
It's already on the floor.
It has, okay, thank you. Dave, I appreciate the crew and everything that they're doing on the projects that you've listed and some of the examples that you've shown on that. And my particular ears got raised when you brought up Mead Channel and some of the conditions that we're experiencing in that area right now. Have you got any more plans or projects lined up for the Mead Channel?
I don't have anything specifically today, but I guarantee you we'll be back in there this year. There were, we are moving just completely around the city and taking areas as they come. And so we will no doubt be in Mead Channel and trying to remove some of that woody debris and getting in that channel.
And Mayor, another question is that on the maintenance side of it, when this woody debris is removed, what is the frequency rate that we can kind of expect to have your crews go back in that area? Once it's been established or reestablished into a drainage area and then looking in the future, what kind of timeframes are we looking at?
We're trying to apply some new type of herbicides to prevent this growth from coming back. And so we will be. back, and so we will be able to see this year how quickly that growth is coming back. In some of these areas, these willows will come back within a matter of a year or two, so we'll just have to see how that herbicide works and to see if that slows the growth down as to when we'll need to get back in there and touch up those areas.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll yield the floor.
Floor has been yielded. We'll go to Alderman Jerry Wright. Jerry?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Dave. Good job for your crew. I just wanted to share with council, because this is the only time we get to talk together on a few things, but if you look at that, a lot of that work is studies and plans, but also, if you look at some of the bigger ticket items, the Silver Street Interchange Utility Reconstruction, there's $300,000 of this drainage money going towards a reconstruction of a major interstate highway project. We also have Jackson Boulevard in West Main, $175,000. We're putting a lot of money in these, and it's going to these areas. I know they need to be done. There's not a question about that. We have a similar deal with Omaha Street, West Jackson, and so forth. But what it's doing is, because our revenue is only limited, we're not getting at some of the areas I think we need to get into as soon as we should, like on Nebraska Centennial and so forth. So I want to see continued dialogue between Public Works and us, especially the Public Works Committee, on how we can work in getting some of these funding problems resolved. And I've talked to Terry about it, and I just think we need to, as a council, stay on top of this because there's some big-ticket items out there we need to do, but we also need to go back and address those issues like Dover Street, Sierra Street, Pierce Street, that have been there since 1950, 1960, or 1940, and we're not getting at them because we're taking care of other bigger issues that are just as legit. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can't sit here and address funding issues when we realize, well, we prioritize. We all know. But I appreciate what you guys have done, and it makes a lot of headway. It's something that's been a long time coming, and, you know, I'm not sure what to say about the funding issue, other than we make priorities on how we're going to do that, and so, and everybody knows what those priorities have been adjusted to, so understanding you guys are limited in your funding, and that's simply a decision that this council made, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all in favor of acknowledgement, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 37.
Item number 37 is the Acknowledged Summary Fee, Summary of Free Parking Asked Request in Downtown Area. I'm going to make motion to acknowledge.
Motion by Lewis and a second by?
Second.
Second by Larente, and we'll go to Alderman Ritchie-Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm glad we got a course of seconds on this because I do support this. However, I would like to bring up a interesting point that Ron Jeffries brought up on a similar discussion that he was having with the county, and primarily what it amounts to is this is good PR for the city of Rapid City to allow the free parking. The disadvantage, of course, is that we lose the revenue that goes towards the parking fund. However, it is also made up in other sources of revenues that, specifically if the event that were taking place now at the Masonic Temple, people will be staying overnight, and they will be spending their money here and within Rapid City. They'll probably be going to restaurants, and then the rest of the family will be spending additional money on different things within the city of Rapid City. So I think this is a good win-win. But however, my question will be if we can have a little bit further discussion on the ability to have additional free parking downtown and if we need to limit that because of the potential of having other free parking, and just want to be reassured that we are not going overboard and start losing revenue from the parking meters themselves, and if we have to do some makeups in this area, then can we look at other sources of revenue to do the makeup for the parking meters? Thank you.
Alderman Steve Larente.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I just wanted to reiterate what I said at the Legal and Finance Meeting on this issue. What's important is that there's a very fluid communication between the police office and the finance office, because the finance office handles the dollars that take care of our bond requirements, and that's what that parking revenue helps pay for. So my only word of caution, if you will, was that there's got to be a great fluid communication between the police office, where they say yes to a lot of this free parking that they're talking with the finance office, and the finance office is aware of the potential revenue decreases throughout the year so that they can come back and say, you know what, we're getting short. We need to be very careful about what we're approving, because it's my understanding, Police Chief, if you can, if you want to, you know, weigh in there, that they have the ability to sign off on some of the smaller ones, as you spoke at the Legal and Finance Meeting, or your representative, and so most of the larger ones will come to us, like tonight. We have the Masonic Temple in front of us, but all of those small ones will add up as well, so I just want to make sure that that communication happens with the finance office and our bond requirement, so thank you.
Did you have a question for the chief? No? Okay. Any further discussion on this item? All in favor of acknowledgement, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I want to thank Alderman Amanda Scott for raising this issue and questioning, and our chief for putting together this information, so thank you. All right, we did have a speaker request form. I need to bring this to the attention of the council. Speaker request form was submitted after the approval of the consent calendar, and this was for item number 54, and it was a speaker request from Dan Steffner. Item 54 was an acknowledgement, so my recommendation is to simply, let's get a motion on the floor to allow him, if you so choose, to have three minutes of testimony. If the council then chooses to respond to that or want to make any comments, then I'm going to ask there to be a reconsideration of the item, but if it's simply to make a comment, I don't think it's necessary to reconsider the item since it's an acknowledgement. We have a motion by Lewis and a second by Wright to allow Mr. Steffner three minutes of testimony on item number 54, which is the acknowledged notice by President's Plaza LLC. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Really, I want to speak as Dan Steffner, not as Main Street Square, not as destination of Rapid City, as Dan Steffner, downtown Rapid City. Been here 40 years. What does number 54 mean? How long? How much longer? What do we do now? Are you kidding? Really? Where do we go now? I think we're all a little tired. I'm sure Alderman Wyffenbach's a little tired. I'm sure the mayor's a little tired. I know Dan Steffner's a little tired. I'm sure Jerry Wright's a little tired. Guess what? I am a little tired. Not as destination of Rapid City, not as Main Street Square, as Dan Steffner, being here for 40 years. I watch the buildings being torn down. I saw a lot of cleaners. I saw the State Theater. I saw it. Oh, I lived here. Guess what? I just urge us as a city, as a council, as a group, to now make some decisions. Guess what? There are people out there who want something to happen on that corner. It's a valuable corner. We can move forward with something that can make a difference, and I really believe that. And you are the team to do it. It's enough. It's long enough. I don't know. We've waited a long time, so I appreciate your consideration and taking a really good, deep look at what tomorrow brings. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move on to public comment for items 58 through 60, items 58 through 60, and public comment is now open, and we have two public comment requests on item number 60. We'll first go to Ray Carpenter, President's Rapid City Airport Board. Good evening, General.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, council. The principal responsibility of the Rapid City Regional Airport Board is to ensure an efficient, safe, and cost-effective airport to best serve the over 1 million, 1/2 million passengers that pass through the regional airport annually. I'm proud to be associated with the Rapid City Regional Airport. I believe it is a world-class airport with highly qualified staff. The Rapid City Regional Airport has received superior marks from any and all inspections and visits from outside agencies and individuals. The Rapid City Regional Airport Board is appointed by the Rapid City Mayor and confirmed by the Rapid City Council. We are your guys, and we collectively oppose the proposed ordinance regarding the Rapid City Regional Airport and the Rapid City Fire Department for at least two reasons. First, the ordinance is unnecessary because we have an MOU governing the relationship now, and secondly, it would compromise the board's ability to get the best deal from the Rapid City Fire Department. It is also worth noting, the Federal Aviation Administration official for our region said he knew of no other city in the region that had resorted to enacting an ordinance like the one being considered by Rapid City. This has become an emotional issue, but the facts are clear. The Rapid City Regional Airport has received quality service from the Rapid City Fire Department for over 40 years, and the board has no intention of making any change. The number-one priority for the Rapid City Regional Airport is safety. The number-one complaint, shouldn't surprise you, that we get from our air travelers is the cost of our airline tickets, and firefighting services frankly are part of that cost. The Rapid City Regional Airport paid $665,000 last year for firefighting services, most of which went to the Rapid City Fire Department. This was our third-largest expense. Last spring, the board began looking at ways to reduce costs and expand the services provided by the Rapid City Fire Department. As part of the process, the board contacted several private firefighting firms who provide firefighting services to other airports and asked for cost estimates, not RFPs. We also were asking about contract terms for purposes of comparison. Two firms responded and provided important information regarding cost, duties, and assignment of firefighters. The board used that information to work with all parties concerned to formulate a memorandum of understanding that addresses and reduces costs for firefighting services, expands the tasks for firefighters that support the airport, and gives the airport limited say regarding assignment and promotion of firefighters. Until we went out for estimates, there was little interest on the part of the Rapid City Fire Department in negotiating in any of these three areas. So I ask you, with an ordinance in place, what is going to be the incentive for the Rapid City Fire Department to negotiate on anything in the future? Again, severing the relationship with the Rapid City Fire Department was never the purpose. Ultimately, the Rapid City Regional Airport Board was able to get a better deal for the traveling public with expanded services in a world-class facility at a lower cost with the same level of safety as in the past, just exactly what the airport board is supposed to do, all without an ordinance.
Thank you, General. We'll now go to Board Member Todd Austin-Fort, also on the same item, item 60. Good evening, Todd.
Hey. Mayor, members of City Council, I couldn't have put it any better. General Carpenter's letter sums up how I feel. My position is still believe that the ordinance is unnecessary, and I stand by my comments that I made at the Legal and Finance Committee. That being said, I'm pretty sure the ordinance is going to pass tonight, so I took the liberty of contacting Chief Malteverne this morning after an email exchange between Councilman Estis and President Carpenter, asking if the MOU, the memorandum of understanding, was in the ordinance, the proposed ordinance. I asked Chief Malteverne, and Chief Malteverne asked City Attorney Landine, and they did confirm that the memorandum of understanding is now going to be codified in this ordinance. So having the language in the ordinance, I guess, is a bitter pill to swallow if you're going to pass the ordinance, but it's more or less accomplishes what the airport board wanted. All we wanted was that memorandum of understanding with the airport board and the members of the firefighters. So I guess I'm excited to move forward with the new agreement in place, but still believe that the ordinance is unnecessary.
Thank you. Would you not have any further speaker request forms on items 58 through 60? Have I missed anyone? Public comment is now closed for those items, and we'll start with item number 58. Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number 58 is second reading of ordinance 6030, supplemental appropriation number 1 for 2015. I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Motion by Lewis, second by Larente. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 59.
Item 59 is first reading, well, it's Public Works, but I'll read it anyway, I guess.
Go ahead.
First reading of ordinance 6035, an ordinance to revise the Rural Services to District Taxing District, excuse me, District by amending chapter 3.08 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, a move to approve.
Motion by Lewis, second by Nordstrom. Any discussion in 59? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 60.
Item 60 is first reading of ordinance 6029, an ordinance to codify the relationship between Rapid City Regional Airport Board and the Rapid City Department of Fire and Emergency Service by adding section 2.72, 2.115 to the Rapid City Municipal Code, a move approval.
Second.
Motion by Lewis, second by Wright. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. We're now on public hearing items 61 through 68, and public hearing is now open. Public comment is now open. We do have one speaker request form, and that's for item 65, and we'll go to Macario Good evening.
Good evening. I'm here on behalf of Stanth Montjodos, also known as Sam Maris, and it's my understanding that this amount here was doubled due to a late fee. I don't know if that's true or not, so I'm here to request that it be reduced due to the fact that he's been in and out of Fort Meade Veterans Hospital the last three months, and apparently, I wasn't aware of this assessment. Usually, I take care of those things for him, so basically, I'm here to ask that it be reduced.
Okay. Thank you. We have no further public comments on items 61 through 68. Public comment is now closed. We're now in consent public hearing items 61 through 65. Any council members like to remove items for separate consideration? Jerry Wright.
65 for discussion.
Do we have a motion to approve 61 through 4? Motion by Larente, second by Nordstrom. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're now on item number 65. Charity, could you read this on the record for us? 65.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item number 65 is to approve resolution number 2014-119B, loving assessment for cleanup of miscellaneous property, and I will yield the floor.
Floor has been yielded. Do we have a motion? Actually, let's first go to our Assistant Finance Officer Tracy Davis. Tracy?
I do have one item that needs to be taken off of this assessment roll. Item number five for Katrin Boulevard Investors. They did make their payment earlier today.
Do we have a motion with the motion to remove five? We have a motion by Nordstrom and a second by Roberts, and this is to remove five only. Okay. Would you like to still keep the four? Ritchie? No? Alderman Jerry Wright.
Tracy, on this, Sam Maris, if he was hospitalized at the VA Center, was that verified or anything? Is this first you've heard of it, or is?
That is the first I've heard of it, yes.
Hey.
Joel may have some more information.
Joel, go ahead.
Sam Maris is very well-known to us. In fact, we are prosecuting him for multiple houses. He does not take care of his property, which, why we're pursuing him, I would not advocate that you waive this fee.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Ritchie-Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be on board with the City Attorney's recommendation on this because ever since I've gotten on the City Council, this property owner has been involved in several cases that we've been trying to deal with on substandard housing, and there seems to be an effort by this individual to avoid doing the responsible thing, so I would urge the council to keep this on the... So I would urge the council to keep this on the levying assessment roll. Thank you.
Any further discussion on this item? On item 65, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are now at the end of public hearing calendar, items 66 through 68, non-consent. And we will go to Chad Lewis to read this on the record for us.
Sorry, I got used to Charity answering for me. Item number 66 is second reading of ordinance 6026, an ordinance amending chapters, section 17.06 of the, chapter 17 of Rapid City Municipal Code. Res zoning within described property is requested by Ferber Engineering Company for Aspen Ridge Lawn and Landscape LLC for rezoning from no district to general commercial district for property generally located as being located along the south Sherden Lake Road between Crowell Avenue and Dunsmore Road. Move approval in conjunction with the planned development designation.
Motion by Lewis, second by Nordstrom. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 67.
Item number 67 is second reading of ordinance 6027, an ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. Res zoning within described property is requested by Spurlock Engineering for Don Weasler for, from a rezoning from general agricultural district to medium-density residential district for a property generally described as being located southwest of intersection of North Creek Drive and, east Anamosa Street. Recommendation to approve.
Motion by Lewis, second by Larente. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 68 is second reading of ordinance 6028, an ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. Res zoning within described property is requested by Spurlock Consulting for Don Weasler for rezoning from a general commercial district to medium-density residential district for a property generally described as being located southwest of intersection of North Creek Drive and east Anamosa Street. Recommend approval.
Second.
Motion by Lewis, second by Larente. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. 69 bill list. Tracy Davis.
There are no additions to the bill list, so the total amount is $4,696,759.13.
Motion by Estes, second by Wright. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion to adjourn?
Just a minute.
Motion by Wright.
I just, may I remind, we have a town hall?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Town hall meeting tomorrow night, Ward III, at Meadowbrook School, 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. You're all welcome.
Motion to adjourn in there?
And a motion to adjourn.
Second by Drew. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned. Have a good evening, everyone. 7:41 p.m. Good night.